I'd like to call the meeting over. Please stand up and let me introduce you. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Much in favor of the public that we did have an executive session prior to the meeting to discuss personnel. Go ahead.
Mrs. Elder, here. Mrs. Cozart, here. Dr. Lachlan. Mrs. Maitz, here. Mr. Muller.
Here.
Mr. Music.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Dr. Sorge. Mr. Hauser.
Here.
Thank you.
This time I'd like to open the floor to the hearing's part of mind. Any of you two wish to speak out on the agenda for tonight, you're welcome to step in, give your name and address. Seeing no one, I move for resolution number 196, the approval of a minute. We have a motion on the floor and second. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? motion passed. Solicitor, report.
I recommend you move on resolution number 197, the approval of the settlement of the tax bill. And this matter has been discussed on a common occasion, we agree it is fair and ethical to settle.
Second.
Motion, second. Questions on the motion? All in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Motion passed.
I recommend that you move on resolution number 198. This is student disciplinary matter number three of the 2014-2015 school year. This matter was discussed extensively in executive session.
Second.
Motion, second on the floor. Questions on the motion? All in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. Solicitor, report. Dr. Lachlan's not here, so...
Well, I just have one comment. In our curriculum committee meeting this evening, prior to this meeting, we learned from a couple of our administrators that our students are being tested in the eighth grade level 11 days this year, and our fourth graders have nine days of testing. And I want the public to know that as parents, they can opt their students out of that testing. And I personally, if I still had students in this district, would really love to send a message to the state and say, "Dumb, you're dumb. You're done ruining our instruction days, and we're not taking them." Other states in this country have done that. Oregon, as a state, stood up and opted out of their state test. Aqua, in New York State, their parents have opted their students out of their tests. And I would love to see a grass for you in the state of Pennsylvania. So, and to support what I just said, I would like to turn to Mr. Kellig just for some real data.
Just looking at some of the numbers, I thought about testing by the numbers Mrs. Cozart alluded to. In the junior high collectively, in the month of April and May, we will have 13 days designated for testing. Now, that is spread out in different grade levels. However, as she did mention, the eighth grade in particular, okay, is a grade that potentially you can be, students can have approximately 11 days of testing. Last week, every seventh and eighth grader, every seventh grader had the PSSA Language Arts test, which was four days. This week, we have three days of the math test, which will take place with the PSSAs for seventh and eighth graders. In addition, if you are a student that is completing the Algebra I, you will take the Keystone exam. And in addition, for eighth grade, they're also going to be in the month of April, taking two days of the science test as well. So, the eighth grade, there's potential for a student to have 11 days of testing. And we certainly recognize that that's a lot of testing for our students. And I really want to credit our staff and our students for, you know, they're being, they're wonderful in terms of their efforts in taking the test and trying to maintain their focus. But as Mrs. Cozart alluded to, that is a lot of testing for sure. And in May, we'll also be taking the Keystone Biology test. So collectively, collectively, we're looking at 13 testing days where the eighth graders are certainly at the heart of the testing, the potential for 11 days of testing. Thank you.
I just wanted to make Kellig aware that they have options. I don't think parents ever think they have options. And I want them to be aware. And I personally feel very strongly that those last days of instruction impact our students. There's a lot, a lot of information out there. Diane Ravitch is a really wonderful resource. If you've read any of her information, that we are testing our students too much in this country. And the impact that is, that is being felt in STEM as one area is significant. So I just wanted the parents to know that they have options. Thank you, Mr. Muller. And that's the end of my rant. Mr. Hauser, thank you.
Thank you. Education planning.
Thank you. We're going to begin with the junior high going in reports.
Okay, good evening. Thank you very much for inviting us here tonight to talk about what's going on in the junior high. We talked about a lot of changes in the junior high over the last year, things that we have implemented, things such as the STEM program for the Intro Engineering course, which we're very excited about, which has taken off here this year. We talked about the Intro to Business course, which is introduced in ninth graders. It's a dual enrollment course, first time for a dual enrollment. We've talked about the revamp of biology and making, every ninth grade student next year will be taking biology with a lab, which is a huge initiative. In addition, of courses such as Broadcasting Communication for our ninth graders, which is a very popular collective. So we've introduced some exciting things in the ninth grade curriculum in the junior high. But the one thing we haven't talked about, that I believe is truly what I would call the meat and potatoes of what we were doing, is in the area of math and Language Arts, in particular in the seventh grade. And that's what I really want to take time and focus and highlight today. We're not going to talk about, a whole lot about that today. We're not going to woo you with that. What we're going to talk about is good teaching, best practices, and better teachers that are going back and they're being trained on how to create engaging lessons that's going to be engaging for the students, and it's going to be aligned for the Pennsylvania Core that's meeting their needs the best that we possibly can. So I'm very excited to talk about this today, talk about some of the practices and how we are changing things in the seventh, in the seventh grade in those areas. We think seventh grade is key. It's the foundation for our students. And so many of our students are coming from the elementary school, where to be quite frank, they spend a large portion, portion of their day in the area of math and Language Arts. They get to the seventh grade, traditionally, you got one period. That's a tremendous transition for them. So the one thing we really wanted to do is we wanted to add some more time in the seventh grade in these two critical areas, being math and Language Arts. So as I, we indicated before, we added a lab period for an additional period that is attached to the Language Arts course and the math course, to which they go to every other day. What does that mean? That means 90 extra days in the area of math and Language Arts during their seventh grade year only. We believe that's an appropriate transition from the elementary years into the junior high, and we're really excited about that. Now, I can tell you, when I approached our faculty, it's sitting up front, and I appreciate them being here, about spending an additional 90 periods with their students, I think they were scratching their head a little bit, okay, and saying, "Really? What are we going to do at the time here?" And I can tell you that through some professional development, through looking at researching best practices, and probably more importantly, through their collaboration with one another, I think that this year, being year one, we hit the deck running. And I'm really looking forward to the results that we're going to have and look at how this is impacting our building. So without any further information, what I'd like to do is I'd like to introduce our three Language Arts teachers. And these are your seventh grade Language Arts teachers who have carried the ball here and incorporated the extra period. And our three Language Arts teachers, I think, please come up. Mrs. Gaffney, Mrs. Susan Gaffney, Mrs. Carrie Mangus, Mrs. Kathy Misero. They're going to share a little bit about what they're doing in the Language Arts course with this lab period at the junior high.
Good evening. To begin, I'd like to give you some of the background to explain why we use some of the strategies we do to teach reading and writing in the English classes. Kathy, Carrie, and I are part of a team of junior high teachers who participated in several Penn Literacy network workshops that were held at the literacy high school beginning of the fall of 2013. Our team included seventh grade teachers from the Science Department, World Cultures, and of course, the English department. One of the major benefits of us all receiving the instruction at the same time was we were able to return to our classrooms and immediately begin implementing these strategies that we were learning, so the students were receiving the instruction in each of those content areas. This provided a unified and consistent approach to our instruction, and I think the students were better than if I had. In addition, this year, the eighth grade teachers had a team of teachers who also participated in those same workshops, and so we're going to be able to see that consistency continue as the seventh grade group moves on to the eighth grade. Many of us have been teaching for a number of years, so we have been exposed to a variety of different professional development opportunities. We, as a group, felt that this was one of the best, if not the best, series of workshops that we had attended. And part of the reason is because it gave us some very specific learn, or very specific strategies that we could take back to our classroom and begin using with our students in teaching the writing as well as the reading. The instruction that we received and the training is all research-based, so we know that it's going to work for us. Joe Janati is the Associate Director of the PLM Program at Penn University, and he was our instructor for these workshops. The program emphasizes reading and writing in all of the classes, not just in English classes. It also is aligned with the PA Core standards, and as I mentioned, it's research-based. We can use this for both fiction and nonfiction instruction. I'd like to describe one of the strategies to you before Kathy and Carrie describe the other two. The first one is called Guided Adolescent Reading, and this is...
Excuse me, I didn't hear that.
I'm sorry. Guided Adolescent Reading.
You can pull the mic closer.
I'm sorry.
You can pull the mic closer.
Okay. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Okay, the Guided Adolescent Reading is a program that, research has shown that it is the single most effective tool we have to improve and increase student comprehension. And the strategy is emphasizing that students are reading a passage one at one time. So they read and reread a passage. While they're reading and rereading, we also have an analyzing the passage. Analyzing means that they are taking the highlighter and identifying the important details that they can from the content. In addition, they are writing notes in the margins, and those notes might consist of questions that they are posing, that they would like to have answered when we begin our discussion. They also might be making connections to something in the content that they've read, or they might see something that they simply want to talk about further, so they'll make notes about that, too. After they finish the analyzing, then they meet with partners, and they share their thoughts with students, the classmates that they are working with, and they listen to the thoughts that their classmates have, too. The process concludes with a whole class discussion of what has been read and answer any questions that the students may have had. Okay, and now I'll let Kathy, I'm sorry, take care of the next strategy.
Good evening. I'm going to talk about some of the writing that we use in class. We use three different writing types. The first one is on the screen right now, and this is called a Type 1 writing. It's not a graded assignment, but its purpose is simply to capture ideas. We, when most of us were in school, our teachers would start a new lesson by saying, "What do you know about this topic? How do you feel about this? What do you know about that?" And probably the same few hands in each of your classes always went up and responded to whatever the teacher had asked. This is really doing the same thing, only it's asking students to actually write. And so every student is engaged, and every student has a chance to share his or her ideas. John, if you scroll down just a little bit, you can see that it's not long. Actually, they're supposed to be about five lines long. This particular student got a little more into it, which is fine. But as the students are writing, the teachers are monitoring, monitoring to make sure that the students are doing the work, and then we put a stamp on it when they've reached that five-line limit. That lets us know that everyone is ready to go on. They're not finished, though. What they have to do is turn to their partner and share what they have actually written. And in order to do that, the students must read word for word what he or she has written. The reason for this is that it allows the students to kind of monitor what they've written, and make any corrections that they make here when they read their work out loud. So it's really twofold. It's designed to help with comprehension of, by engaging what I already know before I read something, and then it's also giving the students a chance to do some writing and actually revision of that writing. The next kind of writing that we do is something called a Type 2 writing. And for this, this is writing to learn. And so what we are asking for is for demonstration of knowledge. The students are given a parameter. This one was identify four benefits of living, I'm sorry, benefits of living a life of gratitude. This was based on an article that we had read. And in this kind of writing, we are simply looking to know that the students understood what they have read. The difference, though, is before you could ask students this, they might just list those ideas. But with asking them to write it in paragraph form, not only are they demonstrating understanding that they're once again getting some practice with their writing. This is a graded assignment where we check to make sure that the answer is correct, and they receive points for the number of answers that they do have correct. The third type of writing that we use is really more a traditional essay. This is an example of a text-dependent analysis. You might be familiar with that term if you have students who are taking the PSSAs. And this is an essay that is written by the students in class. It is, this was a timed assignment. They were given both English class and the lab period to do this assignment. And we had done some pre-writing together, but they had the eight-minute period to write their essay. The advantage of the Type 3 writing is that normally we give the students what is known as a focus correction area, or an FCA. And so we, as teachers, are able to get these graded very quickly by using these FCAs, because what we're doing with the FCA is really just focusing on specific areas that we are going to correct. Content is always corrected, but then we will pull out specific skills. So for example, we might say, "We're checking to make sure that you have an effective introduction," or "That you are not using any run-on sentences." So we pick those out, just to ensure they're aware of those before they're writing, and so they're focusing on that. I say that because if you see one of these, and you've seen this spelled words, and they're not circled and read, it's not that we're ignoring it, it's just that's not our focus. And the idea is that you don't move on with those focus correction areas until the skill has been mastered. Now, I'll turn to the other word, too. Carrie, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. In addition to providing all of those many writing opportunities, one of our key focuses is really working to develop those critical reading skills in both fiction and nonfiction as well, through particularly a strategy that we call close reading. It's very closely related to the guided adolescent reading that Sue had mentioned. Close reading is a key skill that is needed for the new PA Core PSSA test that the students are taking. And it's a strategy that's really designed to build deep comprehension of a text. And with that, it means that the students have to really closely interact with the text through the process of what we call careful and purposeful rereading. So often looking at a particular guided question or a focus question to really dig in deep. Most importantly, the close reading strategy calls for students to actively read by physically marking text. So through that analyzing strategy that Mrs. Gaffney had mentioned, that idea of highlighting key ideas and then going back and annotating, making those marginal notes, so that they're truly showing that comprehension of the passage that they're reading. One of the key challenges with the close reading and the analyzing strategy is that it truly does mean that every student needs to have his or her own copy of the text in front of them. And obviously, we can't be marking in textbooks. And so we often find that we are re-typing or making hundreds of copies of each passages. And as you can imagine, we go through a lot of passages in a school year. And so that is one of the key reasons that we are transitioning for next year to a new text. This particular one is called Pennsylvania Core Coach. It is a consumable text, which means that we will be able to place one in the hands of each student. They will have his or her own copy. And that means that they will truly be able to highlight directly in the text and then write those marginal notes. And Mr. Mason, you could go back just one, sorry. This is just a page from the text that just shows, the students will have access to that text, and then in the margin, there are some guided questions that will ask the students to actually physically go in and circle a particular kind of detail or to perhaps highlight, and then also questions that are linked to a particular skill or to a particular strategy that is being met through the standards. Thanks. Obviously, there are a lot of companies out there right now who are producing Core-aligned texts, so you might be wondering why this one. This particular text is one of the only, if not the only, that is truly 100% aligned to the Pennsylvania Core. And so that was one of the reasons that this one really stood out to us. In addition, the fact that it is a consumable text really does provide that added benefit that as the Core standards and as the tests evolve, because we do know that that's always kind of a moving target, the text will have that opportunity to be updated on a regular basis so that it is aligned with any changes as well. And so I will now turn things over to Mr. Mace, who I believe is going to talk with the back end of the room. Thank you very much.
Thank you, English Dean. I have the privilege tonight of introducing these three young, fine gentlemen that are going to talk about our, the math portion of that lab. When Rachel Faust and I sat down with these three guys, we came up with three or four goals that we wanted to accomplish. Number one, we wanted to help our highest achieving students grow, because that is a weakness for us in seventh grade, getting our highest achieving students to grow. Number two, we wanted to remediate our struggling students and get safety nets put in place so that we can help these students before they fall too far behind. Thirdly, we wanted to build and improve everybody's critical thinking skills, because they, if we can improve their critical thinking skills, that's going to help them, not only in math, but in their daily lives. And number four, most importantly, we wanted to make learning math fun. We wanted students to want to go to math class. And you know, we all know, that can be quite a chore. But these three guys have been doing a great job this year, implementing different activities into this lab to help our four goals to be successful. The first person I'm going to introduce tonight is Mr. Ron Crady. We will then have Mr. Scott Safer and Mr. Tom McIntyre present this evening. Thank you.
Did he say fine, young? Fine, maybe, but I don't know about young anymore. We thank you for allowing us to attend tonight, to talk about the, some of the changes that we've implemented in the seventh grade math curriculum and to the schedule in general. When these ideas came out, we were fortunate that Mr. Mace and Mr. Crady did send us to Penn Trafford to see how they utilized their extra period, and that was a big help to us. One of the things that we took from that meeting, meeting those teachers down there was that, you know, we encounter such a huge, such a diverse population of math students, especially in the seventh grade level. And like John said, we wanted to use this extra math period not as homework time, not as just more instruction and more of us standing in front of students, but we wanted it to be student-centered. We wanted it to be engaging, wanted it to be fun, if that's possible. And, you know, some of us, I think, when we started teaching, it was a quiet classroom is a good classroom. And I think those days have changed. We want them to be active. We want them to be up out of their seats. We want them to talk to each other. We want them, you know, to just be engaged in the lesson and help each other when possible. And that's what we've tried to do this year. We, along with the math interns, who have been a huge help to us, too, we've attempted to adopt activities that align with the PA Core. They are exciting, they're engaging, and at the same time, as John mentioned, we're trying to promote critical thinking skills for our students. And we have prepared just a few of the activities that we've used this year. For you guys, I'm going to pass it on to Tom, and he'll begin to talk about some of those activities.
Thank you. The one thing I'm going to focus on tonight is, and you can see up there, some of the things that, when we got together and decided what we want to make this lab look like, some of the things we wanted to focus on, we listed up on the board there, but I'm really going to focus on the technology aspect of it. When we went to Penn Trafford last spring, towards the end of the school year, we kind of got some insight on some things that they did that we haven't done as much in the past. They were using videos to teach some of the things, where the kids were going on, watching the videos themselves, answering questions about them. The kids were doing some activities online, and that kind of sparked us to start looking online, too, and getting into those resources and seeing what was out there and what was available for us. And we found last spring and in the summer, as we were planning for these labs, that there was, there was so much out there that we could use, that we thought would be beneficial for the students. And in the past, before we had a lab, before we had an extra 40 minutes every other day, it was tough to make these assignments, because not every student had a computer at home. And we were, 40 minutes is a short enough time to get through everything in one period, let alone to be able to give them some remediation or some enrichment through an online program or activity that we found. So having the lab, in addition to getting a class set of Chromebooks this year, the three of us each have a set of Chromebooks in our classroom that the students all have accounts on, they're able to log in and access all of the different activities that we planned for them online. And that's been great, because it's something that we haven't been able to do in the past, and this year we were finally able to, and I think has been really beneficial to them. So the one I wanted to highlight tonight, this is a website that we found at the beginning of the school year, and it's called buzzmath.com. And if anybody wants to log on to it, if you just go to buzzmath.com, I actually created a separate class, and the password is out, there, that's a, the password's up on the slide here. So if you go to buzzmath.com, there's a button in the top right corner that says enroll in a class. So if anyone wants to try that, that's the passcode right there you can enter. And I did look at one of the activities here. And this was an activity on solving equations. And on this buzzmath website, the students, some of the activities are more geared toward remediation. It's more just practicing the skill. Some of them are more for enrichment, where they're really diving in and they're applying the skills that they learned. And this is a case here, this is one that I liked. When we were teaching them equations, they had to go in, and there's the different characters on the left side of the screen, each weighing a different amount, and they had to balance the scale with the characters on it, similar to how we balance an equation. Now, to them, it's a lot more exciting balancing the monkeys on the scale here than us just writing it on the chalkboard and saying, "If we remove one thing from this side, we have to remove it from the other side." So, and for basically each topic that we've covered this year, there is an assignment or two on this website. And sometimes we utilize the lab period to give the students time to work on that and to help them out, be able to go around and check in with the kids and make sure that they're able to progress through this. Each assignment only has 10 questions, so they're not very long. The students are able to access these at home. I know a lot of students have come in during tutoring time or use the math lab, come in and get some of these done. Throughout the quarter, they kind of pile up, so that with each, like I said, with each topic that we cover, we give the students an assignment. Sometimes they'll get class time to do it, sometimes it's kind of on their own time to get a chance to come in and do that. And then usually at the end of the quarter, we'll go back and check through kind of a checklist and make sure that they completed everything. But a lot of the questions that we see on here were really closely modeled after the sample PSSA questions that we looked at at the beginning of the year, which is another reason why we wanted to use this resource, because when they see the test this week, they're already familiar with how the questions are presented and how it's a lot more application-based rather than just knowing and memorizing a skill and a process, actually taking that process and putting it to use in something. So this is just one of the technology things we've used. We've also used Khan Academy. We've used just some other resources. We've found there's been some games online that we've had the kids play, and along with our active expressions that we use to assess the kids, just on the... just on the flip charts and the Promethean board that we've been using as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Scott now to take a look at some of the more hands-on things that the kids have been doing.
Hi, I'm Scott Safer and these guys are going to help me pass things out to you. Just to give you an idea of, another method we use, not only do we stand in front of the kids in that tradition and pull them up to the Promethean board, have them work out problems and do things, work on the Chromebooks, but a lot of learners are tactile learners. So we try to get these to their hands. What they are passing out right now are, are, they're two-dimensional shapes. This is one of the, this is one of the activities we do. I took delivery of cutting these out for you because I think they would want to. But what the students get is they will actually get multiple pages of these, these objects, these figures. These are actually, mathematical terms for these, it's called net. And what we are doing with these is we can do multiple lessons with this one net. We can have them find area of different figures. We can have them find surface area, which surface area is when you find the area of the outer faces of a three-dimensional object. Well, these are two-dimensional. And we'll have them find the area at a two-dimensional shape, of a two-dimensional shape. And then they cut them out and they can fold them into other figures that are three-dimensional. So it gives them an idea of what it looks like as a flat, two-dimensional shape. And then they fold it into a three-dimensional shape. And they can figure out how to find the surface area as well as the volume. And we, we'll do this and we have different sizes so they can see how, what happens if, if one length is doubled as compared to if it stays the same or if it's one half the size of a third. And they can see how that affects the surface area of the volume. So this is one item that we do. As, as Tom and Ron were talking, we have other items. We get the kids out of their seats. We have, we've taken labels from, I'll wait until you're done. One of the things, while we're doing this, since you're doing it, one of the items that kids don't realize is when you look at a can, a soup can, or a cylinder, they don't realize the central part of the cylinder is actually right there. Until they start working with these nets. And then they can figure out how they have to find one length and it's actually the circumference, the distance around the circle, if it's not given to them. So this is very beneficial to get them to have a spatial awareness. As you can see, the kids enjoy these as much as you do. And they, they actually will have them color them and do the math in the figures as well as on separate sheets of paper. One of the other things that we will do is we've got copies of labels for different food that you could buy at the grocery store. And what we can do with these is we hang these around the room. And the kids are, they're out of their seats and they're looking at these nutritional labels. And in the process, in, it's cross-curricular with, with health. But what we can do with these is we use this in terms of finding ratios, percentages of fat to calories. And a lot of the kids are surprised at how much, how much fat is derived in calories or how many calories are derived from fat in that way. And that may be actually the best way. But this is something that gets the kids out and moving around. And as I believe Ron was saying, classrooms, it's changed a lot from when we were in classrooms because it's no longer a silent classroom where you listen to me talk and you write down what I say. Now it's, there's a lot going on, it's a lot louder, it's busier. If you look up at the projection here, the hands-on activity, what the student is holding there is, we have, we use Play-Doh on it. And we have them construct geometric shapes in three dimensions. And then we use dental floss to cut the Play-Doh so they can see a cross-section. And sometimes when you use a cross-section, depending on how you cut an item, even cylinders, you don't get a circle as the cross-section. You might get a rectangle. Does anybody have any questions? I've got more here, but. I know it was under my time.
Can we keep these?
Certainly, yes, you can keep those. I was going to print them. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. The last thing I just want to add is, you know, we talked about the test. You know, the bar is set very high, okay, as it should be. And I can tell you that these folks right here, the six individual experienced teachers that presented tonight, the lessons they taught five years ago, okay, maybe a year ago, they're not the same lessons, okay? They are working, they have, they know, they know how high the bar is set. They admit that challenge. It's just a privilege to be working with them on a daily basis. To see them collaborating, refining their practice, refining their skills, growing, and continuing to make changes to meet the needs of our students. It's just a true privilege to be working with them. So I appreciate them sharing a little bit with you tonight about what we are doing in seventh grade. Like I said, it's so important, what we're doing in the area of language arts and math. And we hope that what we are doing in seventh grade is going to help our students the rest of the way through. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
First five resolutions under mine are all approving contracts. I would spend a bundle of the first five, being resolution number 199, resolution number 200, 199 being approve a camp for physical rehabilitation therapy contract. Resolution number 200 to approve contract tutoring agreement through the 2015-2016 school year. 201, approving an HS of Pennsylvania therapeutic family care program agreement. And resolution number 202 to approve an extended year educational program contracts with the NHS Pennsylvania School. And resolution number 203 to approve a freshly reached special education services agreement. So I will move for adoption of all five of those.
We have a motion for a second. Any questions on the motion? All favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
And I will move for adoption of resolution number 204 to approve the senior high counselor intern for the 2015-2016 school year. Second.
We have a motion, second. Questions on the motion? All favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
And we have a tentative date for the next curriculum committee meeting of August 18th at 5:30 PM during the CS. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to hear a bundle, resolution number 205, the treasurer's report, number 206, the paying of bills, number 207, budgetary transfers. I'm going to move for adoption. Second.
We have a motion, second. Questions on the motion? All favor, signify, say aye. Aye. Post. Motion passes.
And I move for adoption of resolution number 208 to accept a donation of $1,000 from the Latrobe Sportsman's Association. And that's for a second. And then Mr. Horrata is going to give us a little bit of an explanation of that. Second.
I was approached a while back by the Latrobe Sportsman's Association. They are located in Dairy Township. They are very interested in promoting outdoor activities with our students here at Grade Latrobe. They're also interested in doing the same thing in Dairy, but they reached out to me. I'm in contact for sixth grade camp. They asked me what types of activities we had that impacted all kids. And we thought about sixth grade camp and said it would be a perfect opportunity. They were very interested. I presented to their organization in a meeting, just to give them a flavor of what camp looked like. They came back to me and said, give us a proposal of how you would spend some funds. So I emailed them a proposal to upgrade some of the items that we have at camp. And they responded by generously giving us $1,000 for camp this year. They are truly a sportsman's organization. They have game lands, they have a range. And they are truly into just promoting outdoor activities with our students. So I would ask that you accept that.
Thank you. We have a second. We have a motion, second. Questions on the motion? All favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Thank you. And our next final committee meeting will be on Wednesday, May 6th at 10 o'clock in the Anthony Building.
We have a motion, second. Questions on the motion?
I move for the adoption of resolution number 209 to move to approve the change order sets listed. Second.
We have a motion, second. Questions? All favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Move for the adoption of resolution number 210 to approve our tractor purchase. Let's describe the results. Second.
We have a motion, second. Questions? All favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
I move for the adoption of resolution number 211, bid award for the 2015-16 general school supplies data processing, audiovisual science, athletic all sports, electrical and studio supplies. I'm pretty sure that might be spread. Second.
We have a motion, second. Questions on the motion? All favor?
Aye.
Post.
And our next property.
Motion passes, sorry.
Sorry. Our next property supply meeting is May 7th at the Admin Building, 330.
Dr. Lawman is not here tonight. So I'd like to point out when everybody's hand up a senior night for girls lacrosse, boys tennis, girls softball, boys lacrosse, boys volleyball. They're listed on the sheet. And also spring recognition night, Wednesday, May 27th, 7:00 PM at the Senior High Auditorium. Next athletic meeting, we need to talk to you. Community relations, Dr. George. Resolution number 212, approve the development of public relations office intern. I'd like to make a motion. Second.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Questions on the motion? All favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. Just for your information, your aunt Hines, Indiana University Pennsylvania student intern for the development of public relations office intern during the summer of 2015 and the fall of 2016. The Park and Rex Commission meeting minutes are attached. And the next Grade Latrobe Park and Recreation Commission meeting is Thursday, May 14th, 2015, 4pm. What's going on, intermediate unit?
Thank you. I will move for adoption of resolution number 233 to approve the 2015-2016 WIU general operating budget. Second.
We have a motion, second. Questions on the motion? This will be a roll call for Mrs. Saltz.
Mrs. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Cozar?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Music?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mrs. Mays?
Yes.
And I will also move for adoption of resolution number 214, one of multi-person's paper bids through the WIU consortium. Second.
We have a motion, second. Questions on the motion? Mrs. Saltz, agree.
Mrs. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Cozar?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Music?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mrs. Mays?
Yes.
And the next WIU committee meeting is Tuesday, April 29th, June 28th at 7:30 PM at the WIU Boardroom. Thank you.
EWCTC, Mrs. Saltz.
I move for the adoption of resolution number 215 to approve the 2015-16 EWCTC operating budget.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Mrs. Saltz, wrong.
Mrs. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Cozar?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Music?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mrs. Mays?
Yes.
And our next EWCTC joint operating committee meeting is tomorrow night. Okay.
Thank you. Board policy, Mrs. Saltz.
Thank you. I move for adoption of resolution number 216 to approve the board policies. This is the second reading of them. And there are a list that I'll move for adoption of those board policies.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Questions? All favor?
Aye.
Post. Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Transportation, Mr. Music?
No, we're going to sit.
Technology, Mr. Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. Hauser. I'd ask the board to approve resolution number 217 to approve CCL technology contracts with the basketball, basketball assistant here.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Questions? All favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. Superhead.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 218, which are the resignations listed, Richard Walters, custodian, John Scott Weir, custodian, Mark Burkhart, basketball, boys assistant for grade nine, Thomas Auger, food service truck driver, Lindsay Miller, school psychology intern, and Laura Wilkerson, the teacher of the junior baseball. Second.
We have a motion, second. Questions? All favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
I'd ask the board to approve resolution number 219, which is the support personnel appointments classified. Most of these are student summer workers that work for the school district, as well as some of them are returning from last year. So we have some experienced summer workers that should be welcomed in the. Second.
We have a motion, second. Questions? All favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 220, which is the support personnel appointment of Mark Burkhart as the girls' basketball head coach.
We have a motion, second. Questions? All favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 221, which is permission to advertise a board retreat, which will be held on Wednesday, May 6th at 5:00 PM at Latrobe Elementary School. Second.
Motion, second. All favor? Questions, sorry. All favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
And under, under other business, most of these we spoke of last week. However, there's a few adder, ahead of, excuse me. The kids fishing derby is Saturday, April 25th, is Saturday, which is sponsored by Road Re...
Saturday, which is sponsored by Rotary, Latrobe Rotary and it is held at Rotary Park with the Capstone class helping out at 9:00 AM. So if you have some children that you'd like to experience the fishing derby, please bring them this Saturday. In addition, the senior citizen luncheon will be held on Wednesday, April 29th, 12:45 at the senior high school cafeteria. It's an annual event that is open to senior citizens and it's a nice event and students will do a great job at the high school welcoming and, um, assisting with the lunch. Uh, the art show, the junior senior high school art show is, uh, the opening is April 29th, but it's actually held in the CSD, um, all next week. And the upcoming prom will be Friday, May 8th. The grand march will be at 4:15 in the senior high school auditorium and the prom will be immediately afterward at Nemacola this year. Um, as well as the EWC TC senior recognition night, um, an annual event held in our auditorium will be Tuesday, May 26th, uh, which will be here before you notice. And the board's, um, dates for, uh, May are noted as rows for retreat. Thank you very much.
At this time, I'd like to talk off the floor to hearing visitors part two, that you can come and speak about anything pertaining to the district. Seeing no one. Do I have a question for a turn? Second. All in favor?